It is four o'clock. This meeting of the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission is hereby called to order. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am the United States of America and to the Republic of the wishes of the House. I am the President of the House. I am the President of the House.
I thank you. Can we read the, um, forgot the name, the ground rules, please? Welcome to this meeting. Here are a few ground rules. Please turn off cell phones or silence the ringers. Also, please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If, if you are in person and wish to speak, fill out a speaker information form and submit it to the planning staff before the start of the meeting. Forms are on the table next to the door. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. If you are online and wish to speak, raise your hand, raise your hand online and provide your name, address, and which item on the agenda you would like to address with Teams Chat. The commission chair will call you at the appropriate time. Your microphone will be muted at all other times. In-person speakers must come to the podium when called by the commission chair and use the microphone to capture comments. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three commissioners are from cities, at least six are from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum of five commissioners is required for a meeting. Special use dockets are approved by the commission. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. Appeals of special use decisions are considered by the Board of Supervisors. Appeal procedures can be found on the county website. For additional assistance, contact the case planner. For other docket decisions, then special use requests result in a recommendation forwarded by this commission to the Board of Supervisors. A majority vote passes a motion. A tie vote fails. To voice an opinion regarding a recommendation, you may attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing. We observe the following time limits. Each speaker is limited to five minutes for a call to public, 10 minutes for applicant's statement, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and five minutes for the applicant's Thank you. At this time, we will take roll call. Mr. Montgomery?
I'm present.
Mr. Limbach?
Present.
Chair Dupew is present. Mr. Watkins, are you online?
I'm online.
Thank you. Mr. Young, are you there?
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Present.
Mr. Markowski?
Present.
Mr. Saunders?
Present.
And Ms. Fickett?
Present.
We have a full commission this evening. This is the time to approve the minutes. Do we have any comments or corrections on the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Mr. Saunders?
Sir.
Thank you. Again, let's do this by roll call to approve the minutes. Mr. Montgomery?
Hi.
Mr. Limbach?
Hi.
Mr. Watkins?
Hi.
Mr. Young? Mr. Gonzalez?
Hi.
Mr. Markowski?
Hi.
Mr. Saunders?
Hi.
And Ms. Fickett?
I abstained.
Thank you. Chair votes aye. Minutes are approved. Motion carries. At this time, we do call to public. Pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 38-431.01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commission's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism, or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have any speakers online?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers in the audience? Hearing none. We'll now move to our public hearings. The first one is docket SU 24-13. This is for an accessory living quarters on Mosin Road. Are the applicants Klein present? Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the staff presentation for docket SU 24-13, a special use authorization request for an accessory living quarter exceeding the maximum square footage as provided for in the zoning regulations. The applicant is Elroy and Stephanie Klein. The property is located at 3377 South Mosin Road. That would be APN 1076000B. Property is owned RU4 and is designated by the comprehensive plan as rural residential. Growth area is also rural. The current use is a single-family dwelling. The proposed use is a primary residence with an accessory dwelling. Property is located approximately one mile east of the Sierra Vista jurisdictional boundary. And most of the properties, if not all the properties, within a quarter mile are also zoned RU4. Those are privately owned parcels on the east side of Mosin, abutting this parcel with public land across Mosin to the west. This is probably the third or fourth application we presented to the commission recently with regards to accessory living quarters. Just to quickly summarize, ALQs are permissible in all rural districts and some residential districts by right. One ALQ per parcel, they cannot be addressed separately. The owner must live on the property either in the primary or accessory dwelling. They can be attached or detached. They must meet the requirements of the dwelling, i.e. living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation facilities. And typically, these ALQ applications would be subject to administrative review. Special use requirement is triggered under three factors. If it's rented or leased separately from the principal residence, if it's used for a business beyond what would ordinarily be allowed under a home occupation, and if there's a deviation from the development standards. That would be size, meaning greater than 50% to a max of 1,000 square feet of livable area, and if the accessory living quarters exceeds the height of the principal dwelling. In this case, there's an existing 896 square foot primary dwelling, a mobile home, which is to be removed. The proposed is a 2,123 square foot primary dwelling and an 1,172 square foot accessory dwelling. Neither of those dwellings are on the property at this time. This is the applicant's site plan. To the top right is the location of the current residence, which will be removed and replaced with an ALQ. Towards the center bottom is the location of the new principal dwelling per the applicant's site plan. The site plan does suggest compliance with the applicable zoning regulations. This is a drone image viewing south with the property highlighted in yellow. There is an active well permit for this property. And this is an overhead shot that would be more or less viewing to the east with Mosin Road at the bottom of the screen. Per Section 2.4 of the zoning regulations, 10 factors are used to evaluate special use applications. In this case, eight of those factors apply to this application. Factors in favor of approval complies with the eight of eight applicable factors used to evaluate special use applications. And accessory dwellings are permitted by right and are all rural zoning districts. There are no factors not in favor at this time. Staff has not identified any of those. The applicant mailed neighborhood letters on 24 June and did not receive any responses. Staff posted the property, published a legal advertisement, as well as mailed notices between 12 and 17 July. There were five notices mailed to owners within 300 feet, and staff has not received any responses in favor or opposition. And Madam Chair, that concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 24-13, a special use request for an 1,172 square foot accessory living quarters. We are available for your questions, and as you're aware, the applicant is present.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant's statement. Ms. Klein? Just state your name and address for us again.
My name is Stephanie Klein, and I live at 3377 South Mosin Road. We are requesting an accessory living quarters for my recently widowed mother to move on to our property so that we can assist her as she gets older and have her close by now that my stepfather passed away unexpectedly in November of 2023. Anything else to say?
We may ask you a question later, but thank you very much. This is the time of the public hearing. A call for comments from other persons, either for or against. You have five minutes. Do we have anyone online?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this docket? No, Madam Chair?
Thank you very much. This would be the time for the applicant's rebuttal, unless you forgot something, Ms. Klein. Are you good?
Okay.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. This is time for commission discussion. Questions of the applicant or staff will be appropriate at this time. Hearing none. Mr. Taylor, would you summarize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff recommends approval of docket SU 24-13 to allow 1,172 square foot accessory living quarter with the following conditions. And I will read those conditions. Those are the typical conditions that we would use relative to permitting timeframes, modifications, and the acceptance of conditions. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Our call for the motion on this?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU 24-13 to allow a 1,172 square foot accessory living quarter with conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Thank you, Mr. Markowski. Any further discussion of this motion? Did I hear something? Thank you. Mr. Montgomery, how do you vote?
I will vote aye to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. This motion is carried. Thank you. Congratulations. An individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within 15 days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at the office Monday through Friday 8 to 5, or online at cochise.AZ.gov. Moving on to our second item, this is SU 24-14, Palominas RV Park. The applicants are, is it Rogelio and Judith Kennes? Are you present? Thank you so much. Mr. Taylor, your report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is the staff presentation for docket SU 24-14, a special use authorization request for a recreational vehicle park. The applicants are Rogelio and Judith Kennes. The location is 10290 East Highway 92 in Palominas. The APN is 10467004. And to note, the parent parcel is just under 15 acres. Property is zoned RU4 and designated by the comprehensive plan as rural. Growth area is also rural. Current use of the property is residential. Proposed use is a 40 space RV park on seven acres during the course of a phase development. Again, the property is located across from Palominas Elementary School, approximately 12 miles west of our location. Property is abutting also rural properties to the southwest and to the north, with residential to the east, and general business a little bit further east. Public properties, or excuse me, public lands are located to the south, the west, and the north of the proposed location of this park. Section 2.51 of the zoning regulations is supplemental to the base requirements of the zoning district, the RU district. Some of those requirements are density is determined by zoning district, cluster designs are encouraged to limit the, to limit the use of land, one parking space per pad, two-way drives must be 24 feet in width, one-way drives 12 feet in width, seven and a half foot setbacks within the space, and 10 feet perimeter boundaries, 15-foot separation between structures. Maximum height is 30 for principal, 20 for accessory structures, and eight feet for fences and walls. Six-foot perimeter wall fence or a vegetative equivalent is required for recreational vehicle parks. Sidewalks and paths landscaping are not necessarily required in growth areas C or D, and again, this is located within a growth area D. Amenities must maintain a residential character. Maintenance areas must remain enclosed and not visible from beyond the park boundaries. This is a site layout provided by the applicant. Again, the property totals just under 15 acres. It would be approximately the western seven acres of the parcel that would be devoted to the recreational vehicle park if it's approved. Some additional information that the applicant provided, again, this would be a three-phase project. Up front would be 10 spaces with amenities and then sequentially developed over time. Each RV space would be about 2,100 square feet. There are two 640 square foot buildings, including storefront laundry with bathroom facilities, 600 square feet of horse stalls and corral, and a dog yard in excess of 1,800 square feet on the, on the property. This is a drone image roughly looking northeast, showing the property in the foreground highlighted in yellow with Highway 92 in the background. The property in the foreground is public land, BLM land. Section 2.48 of the zoning regulations identifies 10 factors used to evaluate special use authorizations. In this particular case, nine of those factors are applicable. Factors in favor are, is the request complies with nine of those? Nine applicable factors. Business and high-density residential uses are encouraged along major roadways like Highway 92. And there are public lands to the northwest and south that provide some separation from the proposed recreational vehicle park to less intense residential uses. Staff has not identified any factors not in favor. The applicant mailed neighborhood letters on 15 May and did not receive any responses to their letters. Staff published legal ad, posted the property, and mailed notices between 12 and 17 July. Twenty-three notices were mailed to property owners within 900 feet. Staff has not received any responses in favor or opposition. Madam Chair and Commissioners, this concludes staff's presentation of docket SU 24-14, a special use request for a recreational vehicle park. We are available for your questions, and the applicant is present.
Thank you. This is the time for the applicant to speak. Mr. or Ms. Kennes, would you like to come forward? You do have 10 minutes. Please state your names and address before you begin speaking.
Judith Kennes.
Rogelio Kennes.
10290 East Highway 92 is our address. Kind of introduced ourselves, but at the same time, we just want to say thank you for seeing us today. Thank you to the board. Thank you to Mr. Taylor for, he's had our back the last couple months and asked and answered all of our questions that we've ever had, and we have an awesome team behind us in support of our project. Everybody calls me Jody. This is Roy. We were born and raised in the area, and both of our families also had businesses as we grew up. Roy's family had cornado upholstery off Highway 92, and my family owned Gem Speeden Farm off of Mosin Road. And knowing and growing up in the business aspect, we saw firsthand the responsibility and dedication that our families put forth in order to have a successful business. After 20 years of military service, we've decided to jump in and have a business ourself. With our expertise and experience in property management, hospitality, and our location, we believe truly that we can build this RV campground to be a success for us and for the people around us. The campground will offer a full hook of site, water, septic, electric, 15, 30 amp electric with the wireless internet, storefront laundry, as Mr. Taylor said, bathroom, and for people who travel with pets, they would also have access to the dog room and the horse stables. Each site will have dedicated cement pad with at least one tree per five pads and gravel throughout the lot in order to maintain our dust level so our neighbors don't get upset with us. In addition to the campground, we would also like to provide space and opportunity for local entrepreneurs to market their goods and crafts in order to promote economic growth in the area. Anything else?
Thank you for your consideration.
All right.
I know you have?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now open on this matter, and I call for comments from other persons. I do have one speaker request form. Candy and Robert Smith, would you like to come forward? Please state your name and address before you begin your comments.
Robert Smith. 10469 South Battalion Drive, Hurford, Arizona 85615.
Candy Smith, 10469 South Battalion Drive, Hurford, Arizona.
Go ahead.
We have some questions about the septic. Is it going to be individual septic, or are they going to do a dump station?
So we will not be able to answer your questions. We are merely listening to your concerns.
Okay, those are the concerns. And if this is for horses, where are they going to ride horses in the area? What age group are they looking at? What restrictions on parties or loud noises? What about the extra electrical pull in that area as we frequently get a lot of electrical storms and we lose power once in a while? So what is the extra electrical going to do to that area? Usually, when you have this many, 40 RV sites, it lowers the property values, and we are in the process of selling our property, which is south of the nearest neighbor. So we are concerned about the property value with 40 RV sites. And what is the age of the RVs that are going to be allowed? What is the size? And where are they going to park horse trailers? If they have 40 RV sites, where are they parking horse trailers if they're trying to bring in people with horses? Those are our concerns. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone online, Mr. Taylor?
Is there anyone online that would like to speak to this docket? No, Madam Chair?
Thank you very much. This is the time for the applicant's rebuttal or comment. Would you like, you have five minutes? Would you like to take advantage of that?
As far as I understood, she wanted to understand as far as septic goes, as far as electric goes, and as far as the age of the people who would be coming out, and the age of the RVs, and the age of the RVs as well, and the quiet time. So we will post quiet time from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. And as far as the horses, we will have a max of 10, and there will be a dedicated space for horse trailers to be parked, not within the space of the RV site, but next to the horse stables. We will max out at 10 horses. If we are maxed out, we're done. We will not accept anymore. And as far as the septic tank, we will have, we will drop a septic tank with a leach field and a dedicated space for the excess that is needed.
Yeah, so that piece, we'll have an engineer come and take a look to see what, what is required for the 40 sites, make sure we're, we're meeting that, or meeting that capacity. So we, that piece was needed to be.
And the electric as well, the engineer will have to discuss with us as far as where the electric would come from, as far as an electric pole or where it goes and all that good stuff.
Yeah, and the RVs, the max age of the RVs will be 15 years, and if you only want it
Thank you very much. The public hearing is now closed. It is the time for commission discussion. Do we have any questions for the applicant or our staff?
I have one.
Mr. Saunders?
Is it going to be a dump station or sort to all units?
You might want to sit closer for a moment.
Give me good exercise. As far as each site goes, each site will be installed with electric, septic, and water. So each site will be full hookup, so the RV will attach directly to the septic, and then we will have the septic drain out.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, who's speaking?
Mr. Watkins.
Oh, go ahead, Nathan.
Okay. She stated that the RV electric hookups are going to be 15 to 30 amp. It's my understanding today, everybody's expecting 30 to 50 amp. 15 amp wouldn't supply hardly anything in an RV anymore. That's my question.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. She's coming forward to answer.
Thank you for your question, Mr. Watkins. I apologize if I did not speak clearly. It will be 50 amp and 30 amp.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else? Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor, could we get your summary?
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Very quickly, though, as with regards to the site development standards relative to septic and plumbing, mechanical, electrical, all of those will be evaluated during the permitting phase. Typically, we don't get into a lot of detail during the special use application because sometimes things may change a little bit, but I just wanted to state that all those questions will be addressed during permitting. Madam Chair and Commissioners, based on the factors in favor of approval, staff recommends approval of docket SU 24-14 to allow a 40-space recreational vehicle park with the following conditions. Driveways and parking areas shall be improved with a two-inch-thick gravel surface, a five-foot landscape buffer along Highway 92, and minimum of one tree per every four RV spaces is required. All park areas shall be kept in a sanitary condition. Temporary refuse and animal waste receptacles shall be appropriately sized and designed so as not to create an attractive nuisance for wildlife or pests. Quiet hours shall be observed between 10:00 AM and 6:00 AM, excuse me, 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, seven days a week. Consider Arizona Game and Fish Department recommendations during final site design and development. The remaining standard conditions relative to condition acceptance, permitting timeframes, and special use modifications apply to this application and have not been modified by the request. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And our call for the motion?
That is fair.
Mr. Markowski?
I'm voting group docket SU 24-14 to allow a recreational vehicle park, as recommended by staff. Factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Is there any further discussion of this motion? I did have one question. I'm sorry, I forgot it until right now. What was the Arizona Game and Fish recommendation? Was there something particular? I went through it, and I couldn't quite discern what you wanted them to pay attention to.
Sure, Madam Chair. And Game and Fish wouldn't be onsite performing inspections, and the county is not obligated to enforce those recommendations. So in this particular case, it's a fairly soft recommendation. We just want to encourage the applicant to be mindful of that report, which has been provided to the applicant. And some of the items that are identified in that report are preserving wildlife corridors where possible, being sensitive to fencing, filling in trenches as quick as possible to avoid any animals being stuck, watching outdoor lighting, keep making sure that it's dark-skY friendly and doesn't, doesn't really affect any of the nocturnal animals in the area because it is a relatively close location to the San Pedro River. So those are generally an overview of their requests.
It's a good common sense recommendation. Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have a question for staff.
Mr. Montgomery?
And that doesn't affect my decision, but requires one tree per four, every four spaces. What kind of tree? I mean, there's choices.
So along with the, excuse me, Commissioner Montgomery, Madam Chair, along with the recommendation for landscaping, a landscape buffer, as well as the trees, the county has published a list of native species that we would require to be used, and that would, and the applicant would be obligated to utilize vegetation from that list.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Let's vote. Mr. Montgomery?
I will vote aye to approve.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins? Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Markowski?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And Ms. Fickett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It is unanimous. This motion carries. Congratulations. Any individual disagreeing with this action has the right to appeal to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen days. An application for appeal is available from the clerk at, at the office Monday through Friday, Friday, eight to five, or online at coches dot az dot gov. Thank you.
Business in my neighborhood.
I think that's it for this evening. It's time for the planning director's report.
Thank you. There will be seven dockets next month. One is a dual docket, yes. And we have four special uses. The remainder are rezonings. So a pretty full meeting. We'll try to get through it as soon as we can. But thank you for coming tonight. It's nice to see a full board, and we hope to have a full board next month as well.
Amen to that. Call to Commissioners. Anything else? I have a couple things, if you'll bear with me. I want to tell Mr. Taylor thank you for putting the sentence "no active code compliance cases" on the, on the list. It's just one more mental thing to tick off and not be concerned about. Thank you. And do we need to discuss our grocery store and is it called Pierce over there, the JH Grocery Store? Or that's being handled by permitting? I got an email.
That's correct, Madam Chair. As the commission may recall, we had a grocery store special use application in Dragon. There were concerns during the meeting about parking on or along Old Ranch Road. Those concerns have continued to be voiced by neighbors within the area. They have submitted, the applicants have submitted both tenant improvement and change of use applications to officially recognize the store. Permitting is ongoing as our inspections, our engineering department visited the site pretty recently to look at offsite parking along Black Prince. Parking along Old Ranch Road is not being proposed by the applicants at this time. We think that a lot of those concerns really probably will not materialize. However, during the permitting phase, we will continue looking at the right-of-way issues, including on-street or offsite parking.
So the commission doesn't need to be concerned about approving them?
No, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Couple of meetings ago, we talked about the, the action plan for the county. And I thought it was kind of brief. I would like to study that a little bit more, and I have a question about what kind of outreach was done in different communities around the county so they are familiar with the action plan that's being proposed.
Well, this is ongoing. What we had was kind of a kickoff meeting, I believe, a couple months ago. We're developing a webpage, actually, that will be kind of the, the front page for this effort. Where we're going to have a lot of information about all the different elements. We're going to publicize different meeting dates or, or just times where staff will be available for people to come and talk to us. We're going to have a survey online. So the past month or so, the, our effort has been kind of concentrated on that. We were looking at big dates within the county, like the county fair, like the Lantern Festival, like typical events where you're going to have a lot of people. We intend on having a presence there. In addition, you know, we'll have the online survey. We'll have different opportunities where people can just ask those questions or even request a meeting for us to come out if you have any homeowner association, a church, school, anybody that wants a presentation or to interact with county staff. We will have more periodic updates with the commission, your board for this effort. Also, the Board of Supervisors is very interested. We will be updating them as, you know, occasionally they, they requested to hear more on an element-by-element basis. It's grouped by things like circulation, land use, environment, things like that. So we'll be briefing you, the board, the community. We hope to have the website up and running within the next week.
Are there any face-to-face event plan as you roll out this action plan to different communities? So that they will know and be aware that this is coming, and there's going to be meetings to dig in, attend, and ask the questions they need to ask so that they feel more comfortable with this approach?
Sure, yeah, we're trying a big variety of different efforts. You know, we're going to have on the website the dates. We're also going to work with our public information office. They get updates out through Facebook, Twitter. We'll have stuff on just the county website. We'll have, like I said, the different events where we tend to have a lot of people already with the different communities will be there. And then we're also going to try to find just places and times where we can go out to the community and, and have just one-on-one work sessions or stakeholder meetings. That will be underway the next six to eight months.
Thank you.
Well, we're, we're trying to make it so it's easier to tabulate. And, and so it's consistent, and there are some open-ended questions, a limited amount. It is. Um, yeah, there will be just a, we're trying to group it based on, again, the different elements. So asking questions about circulation. You know, trying to assess, have you been to these parks for recreation? What are your feelings about quality or quantity of water and, and different stuff like that? So the majority of questions are, are closing. There will be some just open-ended questions, but when you leave them open-ended, it can be hard for us to respond or group them together, aggregate them. So, you know, just a combination. Yeah, and what are you doing?
So you mentioned a website. Is there going to be a link on the current, you know, on the homepage for the county? That would be the place to do a banner.
Yeah.
Going to be a banner there?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Good. Great.
I do appreciate my updates. Like I say, I keep those comments so I can feel smart for a little while.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.